Let me turn my microphone on. Really interesting and relevant topics. So the first thing we'll do is take a roll call of all council members.
Mayor Giles?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Minchell?
Here.
Councilmember Thrower?
Here.
All right, if everyone in the audience else who could join me will.
Agents. I have no two agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In this, it's all liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, we're good to go on that. How about consent agenda? Is there any changes needed on that? Or are we ready to call for a motion on that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. They have a roll call vote on that motion.
Yes.
Councilmember Minchell?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We are going to move into general public comment. And before I call on people, I wanted to let the audience and the council know we received two written comments already today, and those are in your packet or online. Thank you, Bessie Jo. And I don't believe anyone signed up on Teams to talk to us. David Simmons, you did sign up and look forward to hearing your comments. And thanks for your written comments that you had submitted. So the format hasn't changed since you were last in, it's three minutes. And please start out with just telling the audience and the council your name and address.
My name is Dave Simmons. I live at 506 Sunset Street. I'm a Big Payette Lake Watershed Advisory Group appointee. I was an appointee to the 1993 Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council. And I'm a board member of the nonprofit Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council. And I just thought I ought to share a brief perspective on the lake situation this evening. You folks have plenty of problems to solve. But this one is really a legacy issue. The lake has been here at least 20,000 years. We, all of us in this room tonight and beyond, are now the stewards of this lake. What happens to it from here on out is on us. The job assignment of the recently appointed Watershed Advisory Group is to update the 1998 Big Payette Lake Management Plan. It's a water quality plan adopted by the city, the county, and the state. Existing plan is outdated and did not anticipate current conditions. Your help with that plan will be essential. Payette Lake is, in fact, in trouble as most of us are now aware. I hope we can collectively put lake issues in an accurate perspective so our solutions are effective. And particularly, I want to thank those from the city who were able to join the lake tour on April 23rd. Unfortunately, I was out of town. But seeing some of those issues firsthand gives all of us a better sense of ownership in working towards solutions. However, it's important to sort out causes and effects where that's possible. Eurasian water milfoil infestation is certainly a problem. But here's the thing, my understanding after 30-plus years of lake advocacy is that milfoil is an indicator, as much as anything else, of a range of problems rather than the primary villain. If we could push a button and make milfoil vanish from the lake, the lake would still be in trouble. What we know, what's been measured by research, is that phosphorus in the nearshore water goes up beyond healthy lake levels when boat traffic and wave action are the highest. Elevated phosphorus feeds plants and algae. So in part, we have a lake management problem. And that can be addressed in many ways. Not everybody will be happy with all of those solutions, but overall, it can be a win-win. And it's essential that we go there. There's a lot we do know or suspect and a lot we really don't know in terms of what may be degrading the lake and watershed. Drawing up a plan for effective milfoil control that only removes weeds and doesn't address the contributing water quality problems is a fool's errand. Let's break down the problems into their causes and effects and save our lake from death of a thousand cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, that concludes the list of people that signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address us on a general comment? All right, we'll move into presentations. So first up, and your timing was great, David. We're going to hear a little bit more about some lake issues on the milfoil. So I'm going to ask City Manager Forrest Atkinson to introduce Deb Faraday and present to us on what's been going on with the Big Payette Lake Watershed Advisory Group.
Thanks, Mayor Giles. Yeah, so per the agenda item, the Watershed Advisory Group will give you a readout of the recent discussions on treatment. Deb Faraday will lead that, and you also have David Simmons and Pam Pace, who are WAG members in the room as well. And I think the idea is to give you some of the highlights and key takeaways of the meeting that the WAG convened earlier this week on the 26th with the Idaho State Department of Agriculture, the county, the WAG, and there were a lot of, it was a very well-attended meeting, a lot of stakeholders in the room. I was there, a couple other members of city staff. And I think just one thing that I would like to say is commend the WAG for the work that they did to put that meeting together and bring stakeholders together. And to get ISDA, we had the ISDA Director here in McCall for that meeting. And I think it was a pretty valuable meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Deb.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Yes, I'm Deb Faraday, Chair of the WAG. I want to maybe first of all, provide a little history for you and also for the people that are listening. And maybe for those who haven't even really become aware of the milfoil issue. So starting in November, and by the way, I sent it later today, but did you all on the council and the mayor, did you get an email from me? I sent a couple, I sent some documents.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And I didn't intend for you to have time to read those before the meeting. I just wanted you to have some historical documentation. And I'll just briefly go through that, and then I'll give you some takeaways from our last WAG meeting, okay? So November, in November 2024, Jeremy Varley presented to the Valley County Commissioners regarding milfoil in Payette Lake. And they had, Jeremy had mentioned that it had reached a point where the county could not control the spread of this noxious weed. And so the state stepped in in 2022, and this was at the request of the Valley County Weed Supervisor. Now, on April 25th, as you guys might recall, Mr. Varley presented to this council. He gave a slide presentation, and he mentioned that there would probably be a test plot for the summer of 2025. And the mayor turned this matter over to the WAG for advisement. And as David pointed out, he may have pointed this out, the WAG is an advisory council to IDEQ who oversees water quality in Payette Lake. And then in May, the WAG hosted a meeting, and we had Mr. Varley, we had two other ISDA staffers there at that meeting. And they did make that same presentation that they made to the city, and we had more of a real interactive discussion, question and answer session with the Department of Ag Personnel. And then in June, the WAG sent a follow-up, kind of an information request, and I sent that to you guys today. July, there was not a, in July, we did not have a WAG meeting because we were awaiting what we thought would be test results of a test plot that ISDA had planned to do near North Beach. And they decided not to do that. And I included the letter that they wrote to the county and CC'd us on reasons why they decided not to do the test plot. They listed the main reason that Director Tuawalt, Chanelle Tuawalt was the author of that letter. She said she had received some opposition to herbicide treatment by residents and tourists, visitors to our town. They were kind of concerned about herbicide use. So they decided to hold off on any treatment for year 2025. Okay, moving forward, August 26th, which was just Tuesday, Director Chanelle Tuawalt from ISDA did attend our WAG. We had a lot of dialogue about where we're going to go from here. And I've got some key points. I want to mention something, though, that did happen before the meeting, and that was the pontoon boat ride. And I invited all the city council members to attend. I think Lyle was able to go, Julie was able to go. I know you were out of town, Mike, and Colby had plans. I didn't contact you, Bob. I'm sorry about that, but.
That's all right.
I know you've been dealing with a lot, you got a lot on your plate, and Forrest, you were busy too. And so I contacted everyone. We did have great representation from across the board on that pontoon boat ride. I presented that idea. It was just my idea. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a public meeting. It was more to bring people together to kind of see what we could do, just to have some friendly dialogue and go to some places in the lake to look at milfoil. And not only infestations of milfoil, but lots of pond weed, which is also growing quite prolifically in the lake. So that happened on Saturday, the 24th, right before we had our WAG meeting, and we had Commissioner Neil Thompson. Commissioner Mopin was going to attend, but she was unable to do so. We had representative, we had Jordan Mesner from Fish and Game, Pat Coyle from The Park. We had the county attorney, Brian Oakey, come from the county. We had our retired limnologist, water quality expert from the WAG, Mike Beckwith, Pam Pace from our board. She's also Valley Soil Conservation District, representing them. Who am I missing? Sabrina, thank you, from the city water plant. And we had a nice day. However, the air quality was bad. 165 in the red. We survived. Okay, back to August 26th. Key points from that meeting. And if I missed anything, I know Pam was able to make that meeting. As David said, he was gone for that meeting. But the key, one of the first key points that was presented is that ISDA does want an endorsement to use herbicide in Payette Lake, or they will not treat Eurasian milfoil on the lake. Now, they're, they're really about dollars and cents. So herbicide treatment is less, it's more cost-effective, and they have a lot of requirements around the lake, or around the state. They have many communities that they're helping with this issue. So herbicides are more cost-effective. The hand-pulling, the diver-assisted suction harvesting, the DASH program, which the state does sponsor, and they have, that's what Steve Anderson, who is the Valley County Weed Supervisor, he's done for years. And then it got so bad, he turned it over to the state. That runs $200 an hour for some of this manual pulling. The, I want to put in a little note here because this did come up in the meeting. There was questions, Commissioner Mopin had brought this up at the August 6th meeting that our WAG did present a statement to. David read that statement to the county commissioners. Sherry was wondering about a mechanical harvester. Mechanical harvesters aren't meant for our type of lake. They're meant more for shallow lakes. They're used oftentimes in the Midwest to swath a path for boats to get through because lakes have become so infested with milfoil. They tend to pull up a lot of the native vegetation as well. So those, and they're very expensive. I'm not an expert on this at all, but just the little bit of investigation I've done, yeah, they're big, big boats, and they mechanically harvest, but they also pull everything else. Okay. The second point that I wanted to bring up is that we'd like to be in a place, I believe, and our, our, our WAG is in agreement with this, to support the county to continue, to continue the diver-assisted suction harvesting of the lake, the DASH program. And to work with ISDA later this fall, and Chanelle Tuawalt recommended beginning in October, starting this fall and in the winter months, to coordinate the development of an integrated, multifaceted plan, hopefully a five-year plan to address Eurasian milfoil. An integrated plan would include things like this: bottom barriers near docks and marinas where herbicides cannot be applied. So when they bring the boats by that are bringing herbicide to a lake, that has a mechanism that delivers the herbicide down near the root of the plant. They can't really use that around docks. So these bottom barriers are much like what you'd use in a garden, right? The, you know, the matting that you would put out, they're stretched on PVC pipe, and they're put in place to cover the milfoil, and that, that kills it. According to Steve Anderson, those, we might have to get volunteers maybe to help apply those around docks. If he can't get enough personnel to, to do that, that takes being in the water. They're stretched on PVC pipe, and they're put in place for up to 10 days, and then they're moved maybe to the next spot. So that's one piece of an integrated plan. And then, of course, we have the diver-assisted suction harvesting. And then the other one, of course, is herbicide use in areas where there's minimal interface with city water intakes and homeowners who draw their drinking water from the lake. That's very controversial with a lot of people, and that's, I think, why ISDA halted their, their plan. They sent the letter because they did receive, you know, some complaints from the community. So we're now at a place where we hope that we can come together in October to talk about what is a plan? What, what, what might that look like? So the WAG does not really have a position on herbicide use. We haven't really reached a consensus on that. But at our last WAG meeting, it was proposed that a plan from ISDA might include things like where herbicide might, herbicide application might occur, so that the public would be aware of that. And of course, we did learn when they presented in, in our meeting in June, that they do notify water right owners of intended herbicide use. So they do have to publicly notify, you know, water right users. And I think I already stated, yeah, if ISDA and the county endorse herbicide use, it was talked about at the meeting that it would be, we hope that it would be very limited. This is kind of a situation, as mentioned by members of our WAG, not only in this meeting, but in the one before. With invasives like this, it's kind of, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't because they do take over, and they don't have any natural predators. And it's become, you know, quite a problem in our lake. So again, the, the big takeaway, I think, is that ISDA agreed to work with stakeholders. And as stated by Chanelle Tuawalt, the director, beginning in October and into the winter, the goal is to work out a plan on that. And any of you that were at the meeting, if you have anything to add, you know, that would be great. If I missed something. Okay. And if you have any questions, I can, I can stand for questions, comments?
I'll just have a comment. I was able to attend the meeting, and thank you for, you know, you guys put a lot of work to get to this point. I think it was a productive meeting. You know, I, I think it's a big step forward if, if the stakeholders are committed to put together this plan and get community input on this. I think, you know, it's, it is, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. It is a big problem. I mean, obviously, budgetary concerns are an issue, so, you know, for all the money in the world, sure, we could just do the hand-pulling. But we don't. And so I think it's going to have to be a balance of, of, you know, we're going to have to, maybe, I shouldn't say this because I'm not the expert, but, you know, we may have to find a way to tolerate some herbicides if we're going to get a handle on this problem. I, I think also, there was somebody that made a similar comment to what David said in terms of the milfoil is just one problem, but we need to figure out how to manage this lake. Because there are other underlying issues, and, you know, things are happening and have been happening for several years now that, you know, are, are not making things better or making things worse. And it just seems that if we, you know, try and deal with this milfoil problem, and we start and we have a five-year plan, if we're, you know, trying to make progress on that, but other things are holding us back from that progress. I just see that as, you know, we're setting ourselves up for failure with this plan.
Yeah.
So I hope, you know, I hope that that aspect of it, the state clearly, you know, told us what their, where their lane is. It is to deal with the milfoil and not to deal with these other underlying issues. And so I think there needs to.
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, which you guys recognize needs to be a broader community effort to figure out how the lake should be managed to, you know, help us be successful in this milfoil plan, but also successful in, in trying to deal with the underlying issues. You know, David has, has mentioned.
Yes.
It was, it was a really great meeting, and the boat ride was really great to have other stakeholders.
Right, and we had members of the public.
Yeah, Parks Department and everything. It was, it was nice to have those conversations informally.
Right.
There were only two city council members, so it wasn't a public meeting. But, yeah, it's, I really thank you guys for, for your.
Sure. You know, I, I want to mention one other takeaway that just came to mind. It's pretty important that was discussed. And that was that ISDA said they would purchase any equipment needed for a boat cleaning station here in Valley County. They just cannot bring the personnel. They can't afford to man it. We, everybody kind of latched on to that idea. That's just something that was an aside. We got to talking about invasives, how they get into a water body. And, you know, it's, it's very important, I think, for our town, all of our communities, you know, Cascade and Donley and McCall to be thinking about that. One other thing that I was just reminded of, and I thought I'd mentioned, we are having, DEQ is conducting, not us, IDEQ is conducting some nearshore water samples, so the nearshore testing is happening. So we hope that that'll be ongoing, and, and we knew that the city council had asked or had set aside or was thinking about setting aside some money to help with that because we see that moving forward into the next couple of years. So I thought I would inquire about how we go about applying for any of that money that would come from ramp fees. Yeah, I thought I should ask about that. When is your budget? When do you start your budget? And when would you need a request from us? How should we go about that?
We approved our budget for next fiscal year. However, why don't you have your group write us a letter requesting?
Okay.
And we'll consider that.
Okay, all right.
And Deb, great job of getting this up to speed. Thanks for sending us the background information.
Yeah.
To read.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we really appreciate it. As Forrest said, things are really encouraging right now with the Department of Agriculture, the state. They're willing to, it sounded like they're willing to work on a very integrated plan and something that will work for our community.
We hope so, yeah. Yeah.
I, I have high hopes. I think they're sincere on that. So keep after that, and the city will stay involved as you request.
Sure. Anytime you have any questions, reach out to us. And we're always, our next meeting for the WAG is going to be September 30th, 10 o'clock in the Hirsberger Room. We always meet usually the fourth Tuesday of every month. This month, it's the, the fifth Tuesday. So that'll be on the 30th at, at 10:00. So.
And thanks for sharing to the, your observations about the state. Sometimes we oversimplify and we say the state thinking of only the Department of Agriculture, but we're also dealing with DEQ, and as you pointed out,
Yeah.
they've been really helpful looking at other issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, oh, Colby and Lyle, yeah, yes.
My question is, how can the city be the best assistance to work on this problem outside of the request you just made? But what can we be doing to try to make sure this stuff is moving forward?
You know, that's a, that's a really good question. I, I think we'll make sure that you guys are invited to be part of the discussion in October with ISDA. And I'm trying to think of anything else. We'll keep you informed. Yeah, the city has, you know, what jurisdictions do you have? It's the county that has a lot of jurisdiction over, you know, enforcement of the lake, right? The city doesn't really have that. But you guys are concerned about the community water quality, et cetera, and we'll try to keep you informed as much as we can. I can't think of anything. Can you guys think of anything off the top of your head they could do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe you should open up to the mic so it won't pick you up if you're, if you're back. Everybody that's listening, you can hear me.
There are a couple of things I would add, Deb. I think, I mean, one, and I think Councilmember Thrower touched on it, which was that the ISDA was very clear that their role in this is either the herbicide
the herbicide treatment or manual pulling, some combination of those. And the, there was quite a bit of discussion about how do we address the drivers of the problem and Director To Waltz's response was that that's up to the local, the local authorities. So I think this is an area where we really need to, and it's an opportunity for us to collaborate with the county and the WAG on aspects like education possibly of lake users about the, the kinds of things that might be contributing to, to spreading mill foil from the county side. You know, I think there, there, the county is reviewing their waterways code again this fall. So, you know, looking at enforcement are, are the 300 foot wake zones being enforced? Those are in place, but you know, I, to me, it seems like they're not always closely observed by people operating boats on the lake. But the education, the enforcement, understanding the other factors that are contributing to it. I think those are really things that are up to the city and the county and the WAG and
Yes.
queue to some extent.
And that brings to mind something that came up on the pontoon boat tour because we did come right up next to a group of about five houses with all rock walls and the riprap that a lot of homeowners are putting up. And Mike was talking, our water quality expert was talking a lot about homeowners and just their responsibility to think about fertilizer use, things that they put on their lawn, especially some of these slope lawns. If, if they're applied and then there is no natural vegetation to filter that out, no riparian area, and it goes, the green grass goes right to the lake. That's also adding nutrient pollution to the water. There is a lake assist program and our group, the Big Lake Water Quality Council has the lake assist program. And it was just revamped just a couple of years ago. Maybe we could work with the city a little closer too. Because there is a little piece in there, especially for, well, lake homeowners. There's an education piece we could try to highlight. Could we work with the city in some way? Getting that news out and also for, what do you call them? Well, you guys hold contractor education sessions, right? For people when they're building on the lake, but I'm thinking of the landscapers. Our landscapers also informed about what they're using on people's lawns around the lake. That is a very important piece to be thinking about as well. The city and our water quality council could probably work together on as well as, you know, a flyer maybe for education for boaters too. Involving the boat community, you know, getting everybody involved to come together to put something out that would help. Yeah.
Another aspect, I think, where the city could play a role is in the, when the, the development of the plan gets to the stage of public engagement and outreach. Part of this is going to be bringing the community along so that to, to overcome what happened with ISDA in, in the, over the summer. I mean, I think an interesting part of what we heard was that ISDA decided not to do the test plot because the community was opposed to it, but that, that opposition just came in the form of individual comments to the state. And my, I pointed out to her that the city and, or, and the WAG didn't ever express an official, we didn't have a, a, a position on what they were proposing to do. So I think part of what the city council needs to think about is yet, how do you, how do the stakeholders express consent to, to the ISDA's plan for what they're going to do? And then the other part of it is the, the sort of community outreach and engagement that the city can do with the plan to bring the community along.
And I think we can really help with that community engagement. I mean, one other trigger issue that we've had in the city is the deer. A lot of people were concerned about, you know, it's just the ordinance to not feed the deer and what that was going to mean. And I think, you know, we did a pretty good job engaging people and we had like those little forums or whatever where people sat around in a group in a, on a, around a table. There are various tables and certain people, like someone from Fish Game, you know, kind of went around the tables and talked to different people or something like that. But anyway, I mean, I think that that I, I think overall that turned out to be an successful sort of way to get people the information, get people to talk to experts and get them comfortable with, you know, what we were proposing. And something that they were very concerned about. So, yeah, I mean, I, I hope we can help once that plan comes out to, to get the word out of exactly what the plan is. And have people like Jordan that you got from Parks Department, Fisheries Biologists, you know, to, to join in and, and help people understand what it means for fisheries, what it means for, you know, drinking water, what it means for all these other aspects of the lake that people are concerned with recreation. You know, to, to have those experts talk, be able to have them to ask questions and, and talk about those issues.
Okay.
Well, you had, had your hand up a minute ago.
Yeah, I have several points. I hope I can weave them together well. One is I think city council will put a lot of credits into the WAGS, Big Lake Water Council's recommendations of an integrated system. A, a full approach to looking beyond the symptom of what we brought out as mill foil was just an indicator of many other things. So if we have an integrated solution, then to me, I think another really key thing is a solution at this level is to take a buy-in or a participation from all stakeholders. So Deb mentioned the people build the stone walls along the lake have, take away the lake shore ability to absorb So when we think of all the stakeholders and we think about the boating community is a major stakeholder and they need to be engaged. When we rode on the boat with Deb and we got to listen to Pam speak, for example, then also the sense of trust and relationship. I may not have the same solution you do in mine, but a relationship means you can get a lot further. And we're going to have to get a lot further to address the integrated plan. Like, are we going to draw down the lake in the winters where it can freeze off a certain list of level at the shore? All those kinds of things that's going to take to get us where we want to go. So I, so, so far I've mentioned the WAG is an integrated solution. We, we've a lot of way into. I think that effort to get the stakeholders together and to participate and for none of us to hold any of the stakeholders as guilty parties at the beginning. They are part of getting together to build trust and a relationship. I think we need to also establish the fact among, among the stakeholders where the tipping point, as Dave's brought up in the lake. You know, it, the, the possibility of losing some of our capacity to restrain or recover is going by with time. So if, but if everybody recognizes tipping point of what we lose in terms of recreation, what we learn and lose in terms of environment, what we learn and lose in terms of drinking water, we're all vested. And so it takes all of us to get where we want in the very short period of time, 10 years, say, for example. And I, I just think of stakeholders to get together and just encompassing aspect of IDT salt the roads a four mile along the lake and runs right into the lake. What does that mean? What does that do? So anyhow, the, I'm, I'm really thinking about when we go an integrated system. Before we say what that's, the solution is that some of the other stakeholders are really invited to participate and feel like they're part owners in getting into the the big parameters that we don't get caught up just thinking this is a mill foil issue. It is just the issue that's brought our attention to this. But the, the issue, the lake, as David is saying, that the real issue to us is much broader and thankfully we're, we're getting it to the forefront and using mill foil as part of the, the way to do that. But then my last thing is thanks, Deb. If we didn't row that boat and the trust of hearing somebody that you don't normally talk to, and you go, wow, that's cool. I like the guy. I like the gal. It seems like I should have some trust and confidence in what they're saying. Okay.
Thank you very much for allowing us to present. If anybody has any other comments or questions.
And I just want to clarify for the record, earlier I had mentioned off the mic that city staff has been attending WAG meetings and and we really appreciate that. So being looped in right at the outset and having everybody well informed is going to make all the difference in the world. And then one last note on herbicides. Herbicides is a category. It's not a thing. There are a number of different herbicides that are used to treat Eurasian water mill foil across the country and have been for decades. And those herbicides include 24D and Paraquat and, and some others that are pretty heavy duty that would raise some pretty serious concerns about using them in a public water supply. The herbicide that I, ISDA primarily uses is not one of those. But they have some other options that they might also use. So what we need to hear from ISDA is a specific plan about what herbicides might be used and where they're going to be used and when. Before we can say herbicides are okay or maybe not so good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Deb. Appreciate it. All right. At this time, we're going to move into the business agenda. And our first item under the business agenda is going to be presented by Airport Manager Emily Hart. And this is a request to renew a land use lease with the Earthscope Consortium.
Thank you, Mayor Bob. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I don't know if any of you have noticed, there's a teeny tiny little gray dome and a little solar panel up by the windsock on the northwest corner of the airport inside the fence. So that's the array that we're talking about here. Unapco is now Earthscopes Consortium. They've had this lease with the city for about 15 years. And it's here to monitor earthquake activity. I recognized their name when they emailed me because we had a bunch of these around Antarctica. So I've worked with a lot of these folks for years and years. So I was like, ooh, yay. This is kind of fun. But it's basically a 10 year lease with an option to do another 10 years. We did find some concerns that we're going to address in the verbiage when we get to the point of recommended action as far as legal is concerned. But this, they don't draw any power. They use solar only. They're pretty much an innocuous little being that just monitors seismic activity. So Bill, would you like to explain what we need to adjust?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is the definition of a tempest in a teapot. It's a very, very small innocuous thing, but there's just a, two provisions in, in the agreement that came to my attention just right before the meeting, but one is it does have an indemnity requirement that's not lawful. So we'll need to add a small amount of language to that. And there's also, because of the term, we need to put a non appropriations clause so that we're not binding future city councils. So if we can make those two changes, my recommendation would be to move forward with this, subject to those, those changes, which I will work with Emily to accomplish.
Council, good with that proposal?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. I'll call for a motion that talks about those two changes briefly and, and see if we get a second on that and we'll have a roll call vote.
I move we approve geodetic
Geodetic?
Dedic monitoring station land use lease agreement as amended according to City Attorney Punkini with Earthscope, Earthscope Consortium, Inc. and authorize the mayor to sign all documents.
Thank you, Julie. Thanks for capturing all those. Second. Thank you, Lyle. May I have a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Menchette?
Yes.
Member Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay. Good work on that, Emily. Thank you, Bill, for helping us.
Thanks, everyone.
Look forward to seeing that edited document to sign. All right. Next up, I'm going to introduce, normally Kurt would do this, Kurt Wolf, our Parks and Rec Director, but I'm going to introduce my friend Linda Clend to talk to us tonight about the Woodstock Agreement and proclaiming the 20th September as humanitarian woodwork day. So welcome, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor Bob and the Council. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce our new and improved coordinator for Woodstock. I hope many of you already met Craig Solberg. He first came to our attention at the food bank when he offered generously to, after we set up everything for each week's food bank, that he would take the, the recycling. It was a big deal. So he does it every week and has, and that's how we first met him. Fast forward, he's now a member of our advisory board. He's the Woodstock representative because I think we all know that Woodstock is a very big event. And we've been pattering along and I think doing well. And yet we're really appreciating Craig. And Craig is trying to inspire the fact that all of this old people said, oh, you know, people show up. There's no worry. Don't worry about it, Craig. He's trying to get real organized. So I'll really, well, happy to have him. I think too, if I ask if we can give a kind of a synopsis of last year.
Yeah.
It seems like we just got, we're here last year, but so what happened? We had, again, wonderful, wonderful weather and wonderful everything. And, and on the day of Woodstock, we delivered to 81 families in the community and the community that we consider for Woodstock delivery is McCall, New Meadows and Donley and the surrounding areas. We used to try to help with Cascade, but it's just too far for our volunteers and everything. So, so 81 on that day. And then we, we found for the last several years that people say, I didn't know that was happening. What's going on? So for the 10 days after, we delivered to 10 more families. So now we're up to 91 at that time. And fortunately, we actually had a lot of prepared wood left over. In fact, a ton, sort of.
Many tons.
Many tons, yeah. And that was great because Craig then took kind of the lead along with several other of our board members and friends, that when we got calls in, in the winter, when we get a call, it's not anything short of an emergency. And what they're fined when they go to the home is something that people were really starting to, you know, take, take their tables apart to burn the firewood. It's hard to imagine that that happens in our affluent, wonderful community, but it is part of the community. And so over the winter, let's see, Craig, how many did you deliver to?
I think we delivered about 40 cords of wood through the winter time and that was folks that had kind of run out. Some of them were people that had got wood from the original Woodstock, but others were new people in the community and, and it's, it's an amazing event. I'm happy to be involved in it. But one of the gals that we delivered was living in a basically a log shack with no running water and no heat other than a stove. And we end up delivering three times out to her throughout the winter time. She was just waiting on getting into a different housing situation, but it's, it's nice to be able to see that people really need it and we're able to help them.
Yeah. So it becomes more important every year. We ran out of wood. Oh, and we also didn't, I think that we gifted about, what, 15 cords of wood to the Valley County Sheriff for Cascade.
Yeah.
And, and you may be aware that Cascade is really developing their own firewood program too. I think the sheriff's department is leading that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a wonderful thing too, because certainly the poverty exists in all of our communities. So that's kind of the down and dirty of last year. One thing to remember is that if we do, and we do, run out of wood towards spring, when we get calls then, we still make it happen. And by we, we have nine partner churches and we figure it out if we have to buy it or whatever. So we are hopeful that no one truly gets into certainly a crisis. So we are hopeful that no one truly gets into a certainly a crisis without firewood. And it does, it just continues to be important for many people. Um, so that's kind of the, any questions about last year and what we did? And we had a great barbecue and they're going to be back again this year too. It's the Valley Adams Farm Bureau, all people that we know and have worked with, like a fair and everything uh for years. And they're providing the meat, the hamburgers, the hot dogs, and the chefs. So it uh this will be our second year with with them being our chefs and it's great. So we feed everybody with that. Um, I did want, and I very much bring it up, what we grabbed.
Well, she's grabbing that. This year we have some uh new people, not necessarily new, but um the sheriff's department from Cascade, uh Ken Comparing his team in Dallas and his team at the police force, and then Mike, the new uh head of the fire department. They're all helping this year organize a separate saw day. So we're having a separate saw day in addition to their, when we split and deliver wood. So those guys are helping organize it. They're putting on a little barbecue. And we have, you know, sixty or seventy people signed up right now just to come out and saw up all the wood, which has been a big uh thing that's been hard for us to do in the past because we took like six or seven days to get it all taken care of. And we want to thank the city for allowing us to have the time and and the site to be able to do that because it's really key for us to, you know, the lagers around here, we have to have get people to move the wood from Mountain Life Church where it's stored down to your property. And then we have to have people mark it and cut it and everything else. So it's great to have that just ability to have the site there and be able to take our time getting everything set up and getting it all lined out. So we appreciate that.
Lots of good things. We met two days ago um with kind of, you know, key stakeholders, and so everybody's getting excited. I, you know, you've all probably seen this. This is upside down. So uh this is way, this is before my time being involved with the Heartland Hunger and Woodstock. But this picture was, it started as a picture of someone at a very early, because this is our sixteenth year this year. But this was an early event and they took this picture and basically made a piece of art out of it. But I figured that there's somebody living around here who knows that they're that person. I don't know who that person is, but I'm just sure that, I think it's a he, long, had long hair, maybe it was a she. But um I just, I, you know, when I looked at it, I thought, oh, gosh, you know, this is really, so this is our quintessential, I think, reminds everybody about Woodstock. And we cannot express how important the role is of City of McCall. And um every time I see something where you guys are kind of taking some heat, which once in a while happens, I just think about how incredible, because I cannot imagine this event anywhere other than where it is. It's just uh it's the sixteenth year this year. So any questions or comments or anything?
So this year it's going to be separate, two separate days. So the community come out. This was started obviously by the partner churches and Heartland Hunger, but it's open to lots of folks. And we get, you know, a hundred and fifty volunteers on the day when we split and deliver. And uh we're having two separate days. So the second week of September is our saw day where we're actually going to saw up all the logs into fourteen-inch rounds. And then the twentieth is the day we're going to split and deliver. So both those days.
Nice work.
Yeah.
Yeah, really great, great job on that.
Unless we don't get it done and have to.
Yeah.
And you know, that's no problem if that happens because we put it out and everybody comes and helps. And we get a lot of help too from the Hayet Forest and uh Smoke Jumpers. They're just, um, it's an incredible event and it is important for the community. Um, when we look at the numbers, and ironic, interesting thing about this, and of course, I'm pretty aware of the numbers and everything associated with Food Bank itself, most of the people that we delivered uh wood to aren't people that we helped through the Food Bank. So it says to me that there are different ways to have needs and that there are really a lot of families who have needs in our community.
I'll just say, if you find out who that person is on the picture, draw them down here. This.
Well, I know, but um, you know, this has only been going on since sixteen years. And this was pretty early when they did this. And it is, it's pretty remarkable if you look at it. Um, I had a, one of the pastors of our, one of our churches wanted the original as a piece of art and said, well, I don't know. Where did that happen? Yeah. And.
Craig and Linda, thank you. And I understand we've got a proclamation to approve. It was really great to hear the history and um the specifics about last year. Thank you for taking time out to be here. And you always submit a good written proposal, but we like to hear from you in person. So thank you both.
Well, thank you. Yes. And everybody's welcome to come and you can hang out and just have barbecue or we can get you to work. Thank you.
I'll call for a motion to approve the Woodstock Agreement with Heartland Hunger.
Make a motion to approve the Woodstock Agreement with Heartland Hunger and Resource Center and proclaim the twentieth day of September twenty twenty-five to be humanitarian woodwork day in the city of McCall and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second? Thank you, Colby. All right, that motion's been made and seconded. May I have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
All right, it's official. And Craig, nice to meet you tonight. Thanks again for coming and joining us. Okay. Our next item, uh Bessie Jo Wagner, city clerk, will present upcoming meeting schedule.
It shows that we have very few things scheduled for the eleventh. Most things are for consent. Um, so we've had uh several departments that have been out um on vacation and we meet as a group on the second. So I anticipate that that list will grow. Um, so otherwise, um, it'll be a a sweet, a short meeting for you all. Um, just a reminder that September third is the downtown core. Thank you to the investors at at nine thirty, um, coffee with the mayor, um, and to thank uh those funding agencies that helped with our downtown core. And then on September thirteenth, a reminder of the um downtown core celebration um from two to six P M on Second Street. And that is in partnership also with the Chamber. Um, I did want to mention too that the Chamber um has requested to do a um a catering permit, an alcohol catering permit uh for that event. And so they would like for the footprint of that alcohol catering permit to be the the Second Street where it's going to be um closed off. Uh, they have been working with um the police chief to make sure of what his requirements are, to make sure that that stays contained within that footprint. Um, also, they're required to um, the alcohol caterers required to get um alcohol insurance uh that names additionally names city on that insurance at five hundred thousand dollar um policy. And um, the um, sorry, this all just came together. So the uh provider is the um, the new restaurant in the uh
Spitfire Topps.
Now, in in Manchester, that's.
Skidmore Creek.
Yeah. Yeah, at the Skidmore Creek, yeah. So um, in order for them to be able to serve alcohol on the street and the sidewalk, um, it requires a resolution from the city council. And so uh we were at, we would like to request if council would um, if they are in favor or favorable to this idea uh to have a special meeting next week to adopt a resolution that would allow for that um uh for that serving of alcohol. Um, it could be a very short meeting. It can be um anytime Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We just need to be able to notice it twenty-four hours ahead of time because it's considered a special meeting. And um as long as one member of council and staff is in this room, everybody else can be remote. So um, if you would like for me to schedule that, I can do so.
Could we, some of us are involved in an afternoon meeting September third. Could we shoot for like Thursday, the fourth, um, September fourth?
Sure.
Could council do that? And as Bessie Jo stated, we can, if you're unavailable in person, we can have you call in or on teams.
Yeah.
Works for me. Five thirty?
I won't give you almost Thursday at five thirty. As long as we have a form for it.
Yeah.
We have form.
Sounds like we're good.
This is odd and seems excessive. Why, why do we have to have coordinates?
To and to be able to have alcohol on city property, then it um can only be allowed by the, a resolution of the city council.
So do we do that? Or are we like any other parks or anything like that?
No, it's for the city right of way. So in the street or sidewalk.
God forbid, I'll drink a beer outside of the. If you want to say somewhere.
Yeah, Mayor, can I address council?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that we did discuss today with the chief of police that knowing that the intention of Second Street is to be an event space and this may come up again, Dallas does expect to bring forth to the council an opportunity for you to make a decision so that we don't have to keep coming back and revisiting this type of thing. So it's something that can lay in the code and sit with the with the actual chief of police going forward. So he does have that in the works to come back to you because of the event space piece.
I've had all the city streets.
But we actually did discuss today to include the entirety of downtown, just in case we wanted to do like a Lenora second or special event or if Cresties wanted to ever shut it down along Lenora. So we did talk about expanding that and leaving that up to the the police chief. So more to come on that. But just so you know, the goal is not to revisit this every single time.
Yeah. Thanks for the.
Good idea. So I think we got a plan for the uh September thirteenth event and we'll meet at September fourth, five thirty and review that um resolution in order.
Yep. All right, great. Um, other than that, I don't know that there's anything new. Um, uh, the schedule of the eleventh is starting to pack out. So with your special meetings on the third Thursdays are filling up as well. So just to be prepared for that. Council, have any questions or have any topics that you would like for staff to um to bring forward at a future meeting?
Think we're good on that.
I can turn it off, I think. I know. It's definitely not streaming. Yeah, but I I want to turn it off.
All right. Well, next up is, I'll call for a motion to go into executive session.
Move we go into executive session, litigation pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four dash two zero six one F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel at an executive session does not satisfy this requirement.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Julie. Reading that to us and I'll call for a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Great. Well, I'm going to stop the meeting. Um, the streaming is not allowing me to stop it. So I'll just um stop the meeting.